We're gonna call this meeting to order on March the thirteenth.
That's right.
March thirteenth?
Yes.
Yes, twenty twenty-five. So due to the roll call?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Zach Robbins?
Here.
Stephen Harrison?
Here.
Lloyd Lentz?
Here.
Phil Nichols?
Here.
Brent Linford?
Absent.
But we do have a quorum. And public comments?
At this time, do we have any public comments?
Better not for the agenda.
They're not specifically to hook to an agenda. If they're hooked to one of the agenda items, but if there are anything outside of that?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, next item is to approve the minutes from the meeting of January ninth, uh, which was our last one. We had no agenda in February, and so we find ourselves today here in March, uh, looking to approve the minutes from January ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from January ninth.
Second. All right. Zach Robbins?
Yes.
Stephen Harrison?
Yes.
Lloyd Lentz?
Yes.
And Phil Nichols?
Yes.
All right. Passes four oh.
Okay, number four, uh, PC application, number twenty-five dash zero zero one, discussion and possible action on the request for special use permit to allow for a twelve by twenty, two hundred and forty square foot carport in front of an existing home located at one four two four West Warner Avenue. Staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, as indicated, this is a request to have a carport out in front of the house. Per the current code, any accessory structure in the front or side of a house has to go through a special use permit. The staff analyzed the size and, uh, height and all, uh, everything, a number of other accessory structures, total lot coverage, et cetera, et cetera. That all meets the code, so the only, uh, decision that needs to be made is, uh, whether or not, uh, the character issue, whether or not it's appropriate for, uh, that neighborhood. Uh, staff, uh, does not have any issue with the proposed, um, carport. Uh, I did meet with the applicant who was here beforehand, uh, to make sure that it was gonna be placed in a manner that was on the property and not encroach in the right of way. And you can kinda see it here, but there's a sidewalk that goes along there, and so it'll be right behind the sidewalk, so it won't have any encroachment into the right of way. And as you see, they have an existing one-car garage right now, and they're looking to have, uh, a carport to have more coverage. Uh, I will mention, in the area of the, of that, uh, street, there are two others, uh, that have, um, the, uh, carport out from the house. One of them's actually like a two-stall carport, and the other one's a single, uh, in that. But traditionally, within our original platted area, uh, having the carport out front with the flat roofs is very common. So from the staff perspective, uh, I did not have any issue with the, uh, it having any character issues, and so staff would recommend that it does meet the character of the neighborhood and, uh, approve the request for the carport out front. And the applicant is here if you have any questions of him.
Okay, do we have any discussion? From the? Okay. Um, I think the only thing that I would, I would ask then is, um, as far as i- in, in the past, um, uh, have we denied anybody, uh, similarly, just, just, just so I can have historical?
Yeah, I was gonna say, not within the original platted area. We did have one recently that was in the Mission Hill subdivision that was denied. Uh, but there was some character issues with that. Uh, we recently, uh, it was last year sometime, we had one on Grant, uh, we had one on LaBardi Road, and those are the two, uh, that we most recently had since this code's gone into place. The other thing I'll add is, in the updated zoning code, uh, it will be an allowed use as long as it meets basically these standards, uh, within our original townsite area. Outside of that, they'll still require a special use permit if it's gonna go in front, uh, but there have been some changes to accommodate the typical built environment.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the Mission Hills one would have been kind of for compatibility?
Yeah, character.
Also, they have been pushed even into the HOA CCR stuff up there?
Yeah, exactly, cuz it would've been the only one in that whole subdivision. Yeah.
Okay. Any else have anything?
I am, uh, a big proponent of metal buildings. Um, I think they look good. I know some people don't agree with that, but, um, the one selling point that, uh, a metal improvement does have, it doesn't typically require the same level of maintenance and care than, say, something built out of wood. Um, so based upon that, I'd make a motion, uh, to approve.
I second that.
All right. We have a motion and a second?
And second by Nichols. All right. Stephen Harrison?
Yes.
Lloyd Lentz?
Yes.
Phil Nichols?
Yes.
And Zach Robbins?
Yes.
All right. Passes four oh.
Item number five, PC application, number twenty-five dash zero zero two, discussion and possible action on a request to rezone a four-point-four acre property from A-two suburban district to R-two general residential district located in the five-hundred block of South Academy, uh, located in the southwest quarter of section seven, township sixteen north, range two, uh, west, adjacent to five-thirty South Academy report, uh, Academy Road. Uh, staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, as indicated, this is a rezone. Uh, it's over across from the, uh, Job Corps area. Uh, there is a development similar to this, just to the south of it, on South Academy. Uh, as was indicated, uh, it's currently zoned agriculture. Uh, the request is to go to R-two, uh, cuz the intended use, uh, by the, um, applicant is to have a multifamily development. Uh, he would be looking to have a similar development, uh, as the Cottage Park duplexes to the south. Uh, per the zoning, it would, by our code, allow up to, um, ninety-four units, but that isn't realistic, uh, because of lot coverage, because of, uh, streets and parking and all that. So realistically, it's probably half of that. Uh, you may be able to get around forty-five units there, uh, in that, uh, given, uh, the size of the parcel. To the south, they have, uh, thirty-four single-story units, so again, if you go vertical, you obviously can add more units. But just to kinda have a, uh, comparison, the one to the south is, is thirty-four on seven, uh, point-four acres, and like I said, the likelihood of this one probably being, you know, around forty-five or fifty, uh, in that. So because of the, uh, location, uh, and looking, you know, one of the other things I always say is, we have to look at is diversifying our housing options within our community. Having this go into R-two would definitely add a lot of housing options that aren't currently available. So based on, uh, everything, staff would recommend approval of the request from A-two to R-two. Uh, and the applicant is here if you happen to have any questions of him.
Do we have any discussion? If they want to speak?
Yes, sir. If you can, yes, sir. Thank you.
Wait till you get up here. So we can, that way it can be recorded.
Can you put the aerial back up there? Or Amber?
Thank you. Can you introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm Brian Berlin.
So is it this property you're at?
No, we own the... Yeah.
Okay, so you're the one that sold this property?
We sold that property right there. Our only concern, not that they build residential homes, is we got a pecan tree, it's about a hundred years old, that we do not want to be damaged with the, the right of way right there. And that's, that's our only concern.
Okay.
No. We sold it to, we sold it to the developer with the understanding that they were gonna put housing or something back in there. I mean, that ain't, that ain't our concern at all. They took like a, I think it's a thirty-foot right of way, and it goes right up to our pecan tree.
Is it on the south side or the north?
South side.
Yeah, down there where they have basically where you could have a road?
They used to do that right here.
Okay. Is it on your property?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, then it wouldn't be a problem.
Yeah. The tree is like right.
Right. And they, what they did, they changed one, went back from the tree. About half the tree is in the right of way, and half the...
Like hanging over or actually?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So my, our concern is that the tree itself, that...
Okay. Yeah, I was gonna say, the developer is here, so even after the meeting, if that's your only concern, you can talk with him, and I bet you he would be more happy to accommodate.
Yeah. Okay.
That's the understanding we had when we sold the problem.
Perfect. All right. You just kinda wanna come and go on record.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Any other discussion?
I'd make a motion that we approve the change from A-two to R-two for the five-hundred block South Academy Road.
Second. All right. Motion by Nichols, second by Lentz. Stephen Harrison?
Yes.
Lloyd Lentz?
Yes.
Phil Nichols?
Yes.
And Zach Robbins?
Yes.
All right. Four oh. Perfect.
Save that pecan tree if you can.
So our, our current design, our current, uh, only have one road.
Okay.
Okay. Gotcha.
Cuz that could affect the possibility of pecan pies. And that's a problem.
Well, they could always...
Yeah. Yes, yes, sir.
We appreciate that. It always, it's always better when we can come to a place and it's, then everybody wins.
Be neighborly. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Uh, number six, discussion and possible action on a request for an amendment to the City of Guthrie Code of Ordinances, amending chapter sixteen, planning and zoning, article two, zoning section sixteen fifteen, adoption by reference ordinance, uh, number twenty-four twenty-two, the zoning ordinance of the city, by amending and updating all articles of the City of Guthrie zoning code by adoption of ordinance number three-three-four-two. Staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Long time coming.
Yes.
As indicated, uh, this is, uh, finally our update to our zoning code. I have a PowerPoint I'll go over that'll hit the highlights. Uh, you've all were provided a copy of all this information ahead of time, so, uh, hopefully you looked that over. The, um, basically, a lot of this started to really get going, uh, last July. Uh, that's when our city manager, um, Eddie Faulkner, had wanted to start the process to move forward, and at, in July, the city council approved a resolution to, uh, create a oversight committee that would be integral in, uh, reviewing, uh, that, um, item. So from last August to February, uh, there was eleven meetings, uh, in that, and, uh, it wasn't quite line by line, but it was definitely chapter by chapter and sometimes paragraph. Uh, I told the committee, and, and I would like to, uh, publicly say, and I'll give the names, it, it was a very rewarding experience for me, a lot of good discussion, a lot of good, uh, there was no bickering, there was no, you know, pounding, uh, fists on the table. Uh, it was all very civil, so I, I was really happy with, uh, how it went. Uh, but there were three council members, Tracy Williams, Brian Bothroyd, and Adam Ropp, who were on there, two planning commission, Brent Linford, who is our chair, and, um, Zach Robbins. Zach originally started as a public, and then he got appointed to the planning commission, and so he kinda took Kaylee's spot, who was originally on there and went to council. So we had some changeover in that.
So you're saying I calculatedly got hooked?
Yes, exactly. Yeah. You, you were, you were in it no matter what.
The plan worked perfectly.
And then, uh, Chris Evans, who was a member of our Board of Adjustment, and then we had two general public, uh, Matt Crum originally was part of it, but he unfortunately, uh, could not commit to the entire, uh, process, uh, just because of other things. But Joe Chapel and Elijah Morris were, uh, the general public. So, uh, I was gonna go over, uh, kinda go through a PowerPoint, again, that has summaries. I did provide also a, uh, summary of, of the changes, but also, at this point, uh, the code, we're looking to take the code to the first meeting in April for an introduction at the city council, and then a second meeting in April for the actual adoption. Uh, if that follows suit with the publication of the ordinance, then we will have an effective date of the new zoning code around, uh, the third week of May. So with that, I'll, uh, let's see, I even turned it. Oh, it did go. Uh, I just wanted to quickly review, uh, why we needed to update it. Uh, one of the obvious reasons was outdated. Our current code goes back at best to the eighties, most of it is still from the sixties and seventies of the original code. Uh, probably the only reason that it hasn't been somewhat of an issue is, honestly, we haven't grown, cuz, you know, we've been ten thousand since eighteen eighty-nine. Uh, but as anybody around here knows, you guys know, and anybody that's lived here in the, with the last year or two, we're starting to see a lot of growth. So the timing could not be better, uh, to get a new code in to help us to accommodate, uh, growth. But the comprehensive plan implementation, uh, again, we have an older comprehensive plan, but it's a very good plan. It was just never implemented. Uh, it was done in two thousand and two, and as I indicated, we didn't see really all that much growth, and so, again, it, it wasn't really, I guess, positively impactful. Now we have the opportunity to implement it, and even the overlay district that I put in place for our original townsite area that would require design standards and that and compatibility, a lot of that was from our general plan. It called to have things like that. Uh, it also kinda split up our community, you know, recognizing the original townsite versus the larger acreages to the south, uh, in that. So again, it, it was actually a really good plan, we're just now at the point of, um, implementing it. And of course, economic development viability, again, just like tonight, we had an application where we're gonna have more housing units, uh, in place and that. So having the zoning code, uh, does a couple things. One, it oftentimes will take away barriers that may make it prohibitive to, uh, have the development we desire, but also, you can put things in place to make sure we get the, the development that we desire. And again, another, um, example is, is our original platted area, where we wanna keep the design in, in character of those neighborhoods intact, even with, uh, infill development. And then, as I just said, housing, one of the big things that we lack, like many cities, is housing diversity. We have a lot of housing units, we just don't have a diversity in that. Uh, we have a lot of single-family and large single-family on large lots, uh, more and more due to affordability and just desirability, we're getting, uh, people who want smaller houses on smaller lots, and also in and around the downtown, so they can walk, uh, to the downtown, they can walk to the grocery store, uh, in that. So that's a big part of it, and when I go over some of the, uh, some of the code, we'll get in that. And then, as I said, uh, maintaining the character of the city, uh, you know, that was a big part, you know? Uh, Guthrie, beyond our downtown, we have a certain character that we like, we want to maintain, and we don't wanna just turn into another city that, you know, doesn't have any, uh, identifiable, uh, recognition, I guess. And then proactive future, you know? Again, we're at a perfect point where we're still somewhat proactive, uh, with this. A lot of communities are on the reactive part of it because they've already kinda lost the battle with, uh, a lot of the codes and even housing affordability, so we're at a point where we can still, uh, manage that. Oh, there we go. So, starting with summary changes, uh, there are some new zoning districts that were created, uh, residential estates. Uh, basically, it's a large lot, uh, sub, or, um, zoning, uh, it's gonna be one acre or more. Uh, basically, I created that for a lot of the properties that were in south of town. Currently, they're zoned R-one, and so they have the same requirements as the average seven thousand square foot lot we have here in our original townsite area. Obviously, that's not gonna work, uh, because out there, they're large properties, they have animals and a lot of that. So with the RE, it will not only allow them to still stay single-family, but it's gonna allow animal rights, so they'll be able to have livestock and things like that, uh, in that where currently, it's, it's considered a legal non-conforming use. Mixed use, it's pretty much what it says, where we have a district now where we can have residential and commercial together. Uh, the only place we really had mixed use was the downtown, where the bottom would be, uh, commercial, and the up would be, uh, residential. Now we can have, uh, both horizontal, we can spread it out, or we can have vertical-type mixed use. And I amended the R-two to be more of a limited multifamily, and it's pretty much what we have now, cuz our multi-family is really more of a limited, moderate-density, um, uh, zoning district in that. So then, created the R-three, which is a true high-density multifamily, like, an R-three would be where you're getting at a minimum twenty units, uh, per acre, you're probably around thirty units per acre, where the R-two is more of around ten, uh, in that or even less. Uh, and a lot of the R-two is, will continue to be what we see in original townsite area, where, you know, probably at most, six units on a particular property. Uh, there might be some larger developments that are on the periphery, like we saw tonight, but for the most part, it's gonna continue to see more of that incremental development. And then I put a public facilities in there, cuz we don't have one that is, uh, for public facilities. And so whether it be, whether it's a city hall, it could be, uh, the school and that. And the big advantage of that is it functions, uh, as a commercial, uh, site of things when you develop, cuz technically, now, if we put a city hall in a residential area, it's supposed to meet all the residential requirements for setbacks and things like that, and it makes it very difficult. We're having our own, uh, zoning district for it, frees some of that, uh, up. And then, as I indicated, uh, there's gonna be provisions for livestock and fowl, uh, in the, uh, agricultural zoning districts, as well as the residential. Currently, we allow chickens, but it's, there's no standards whatsoever. So if somebody wanted to have forty chickens and twenty roosters in their backyard, it would be hard for us to regulate that or tell them no. Uh, so now we have some limitations. Most of the, the limitations we have are not gonna affect most people, other than maybe the rooster part, uh, in that. But for, and for, like, the RE or the agricultural, it's gonna be based on animal units per quarter acre, so you get one cow per quarter acre. So obviously, if you have an acre, you can have, like, four cows. Goats and sheeps, you get a, sheep, you get a little bit more, and fowl not to exceed a hundred. In the... Oh, there we go. In the, um, residential zoning districts, the RE, as I mentioned, will be able to have livestock, but it's gonna be based on a half acre rather than a quarter acre, uh, in that. And, um, again, goats and sheep, then fowl, and fowl is, when you look at the definition, is basically chickens, ducks, geese, anything. So any combination of that you can have, you just can't exceed eight total and no roosters.
Well, how are people gonna know when it's time to get up?
We have technology now.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, a lot of what I'm gonna go over is gonna ref, what I will always reference as our original townsite area, so I wanted to give you a map to, so you fully understand what area we're talking about. This is the area where all of these subdivisions were done in the twenties, thirties, forties, every, basically, none of these were prior to nineteen seventy. So in the code, I just said nineteen seventy, cuz it was an easy split. So a lot of the requirements, uh, in that pertain to this area, because it, it serves a couple things. One, it, we have water sewer infrastructure there, we have streets, so infill will help to alleviate, uh, more infrastructure in us having to pay for it. Cuz every time a subdivision goes in, it's great, the developer puts water, sewer, streets in, but then the city's responsible from that in perpetuity. And, and the cost to maintain all of that is ever-increasing, and so any, uh, way that we can contain that, not contain, but divert it elsewhere where we already have infrastructure, we're ahead. It also will help to create, you know, better walkability and that to the downtowns, like I said, where, and eventually, as we get some more density, and, and I'm not talking, you know, large apartment complexes, you know, talking duplexes or even smaller single-families, it is going to enhance the economic viability of our downtown, cuz you're gonna get more people that live in and around that area able to walk there and support those businesses, uh, in that. So anyway, I just wanted to show, this is, when I say original townsite, this is what we're talking about. I swear. That's, oh, there we go. So, uh, currently, within our code, oh, well, I should start that. In our original townsite area, most of the lots have been combined into two. The original subdivisions wa, was twenty-five foot by a hundred and forty foot. So most of the lots are combined into seven thousand square feet. One of the issues we have in the code is, even if, our code says, if you want a duplex, you gotta have eight thousand square feet. So even if we rezone a seven thousand square foot lot to R-two, you still can't build a duplex. That's changing in the code. It's gonna allow a duplex at seven thousand square feet, but it's also going to allow up to two units per property by right. So whether you want a duplex, whether you want two single families, whether you want a single family with an accessory dwelling unit, basically any combination, uh, of that, which is very typical of how that area developed prior to zoning, uh, in that. And as I said, the other thing is, is, is the minimum lot size in that area by right will be thirty-five hundred, uh, square feet. Hit this four time there. And this is just to get, and another thing that I put in there, which is, I'm a huge, huge fan of in, in that, and, and it serves a lot of good, because it's way better than having a single building or even, uh, larger units is like a cottage court, uh, type thing, where you have a property, and as you see here, you have maybe small units that are four or five hundred square feet, but they're all separated, so they have a common area in that. So each person kinda has their own unit, but it's all on one property, and it fits in well with traditional neighborhoods like we have. But one of the problems is, is if we go by our density requirements, we can't get there. You know, we, you can be, like, like I said, basically get two units. So I put provisions in there to where lot coverage is gonna be the determination factor. So the smaller the unit, the more units you get on there, but even on a typical seven thousand square foot lot, probably the most you're gonna get on there is six units. And so again, it's a way, it's just another flexibility mechanism for that incremental, uh, type development, but it's done in a way to fit in with, uh, the ne, neighborhood character. There we go. And this is, uh, again, this is, um, some of the, just some of the pictures where this one actually exists on Noble, and you can tell this picture, when I first did the code, is when they were still redoing, uh, Noble. Uh, but that, you know, when, when we're talking maybe multi-unit or sixplexes, that, that's what we're talking about. They're gonna be large buildings that look just like single-family homes, they're not going to be large apartment complexes, that type of thing. But again, you could have a courtyard scenario, or, you know, you're gonna have duplexes that look more like this. Uh, even, uh, Denton Parker, who's doing the duplexes on the west side, on Wes Logan, he has that project, and if you notice, they have the porches and they have, you know, a good character that fits in, the parking's in the back, and so that's what the code is still gonna continue to have, so you have that social aspect up front and, and the parking in the back.
Those are very well done.
Yeah. Uh, as far as the residential, like I said, within the original townsite area, it'll be down to thirty-five hundred square feet, but the other thing that, uh, got eliminated was a garage requirement, and a large reason for that is, um, number one, we have a lot of properties that, uh, don't have garages, but when we're talking affordability, it, you know, if you even have somebody that's on a thirty-five hundred square foot, uh, lot that puts a thousand square foot house, and now we make them put a, you know, one-stall garage, you basically lost all the affordability, uh, in that. So they would still have to have the parking, but we don't force them to have a garage. If they wanna put the garage, that's fine, it's just, again, it isn't the code saying you have to, no matter what. Uh, homes that are eleven hundred square foot, or, or, like I said, smaller, uh, uh, outside, outside the overlay district in that, um, would have no garage requirement, but all the other ones would still have the one-stall garage. So the modern subdivisions are gonna put it in anyway, so we just, you know, left the one-stall in there. Uh, I updated all the dimensional standards, uh, and that means like setbacks, lot coverage and that. One of the big issues we had is lot coverage, like in R-one, our lot coverage is only twenty-five percent. I've never anywhere seen a lot coverage that low. That makes, that allows you to do basically nothing. You know, so over time, it hasn't been enforced, which is not a bad thing, because a lot of people would not have been able to have the accessory structures that they have and all that, because it's very limiting. Uh, we increased it to thirty-five percent, which is pretty typical, but it, it allows for pretty much the development we typically see now, where technically, that would have been prohibited. Uh, we decided, instead of pu, putting provisions for shipping container homes, we just make it a special use permit. Uh, there has been some requests for shipping container homes. Uh, I'll be honest, they're kind of a, a... I'll be honest, they're kind of a, a past fad, if you want to say. A lot of, originally, a lot of people thought, oh, we can get these cheap containers, turn it into living and all that. If you're out and you're off the grid, you can do that. But if you're anywhere that requires a building code, you put far more money in engineering in that to try to get them than if you just build a single family. But again, uh, you know, with technology and and, you know, advancements or whatever, there may be ways. So we didn't want to discard it completely, but obviously, you know, uh, have that in there if somebody would. The other thing that I put in there, this kind of goes back to looking at when we're doing especially the courtyard or or cottage, where there's standards for modular cottage homes. Uh, and because of, again, advancements, uh, a lot of the modular homes are very, very good looking. They're just happen to be built in a factory. And a lot of these probably will become either in a courtyard or even an accessory dwelling unit. Uh, I forget the company in uh Oklahoma City, I've talked to them before, and I forget, doesn't matter. They have modular, ready-to-go code compliant, like accessory dwelling units in that, where you can literally drop it on a foundation in that and it looks like it's stick-built. So basically, that's what this provision says, is you can still have, you know, those. Uh, and that's pretty much what the standards say. It's got to be on a concrete slab and, you know.
I think we talked about fixture attachment to it. It's not.
Yeah, you can't be like.
Yeah, it wasn't on blocks.
Right, like on blocks or on a trailer chassis.
Permanent, yeah, it's a permanent attachment.
Uh, and as I talked before, uh, accessory dwelling units, uh, again, I'm a huge, huge proponent of accessory dwelling units. It's, it's really probably one of the most versatile housing options that any city can have. They have really come back in popularity uh now across the country and a lot of other communities within Oklahoma are putting provisions in there. Uh, in in our community, again, prior to the current uh code, you know, we still have some. We still have legal non-conforming garage apartments. We still have some accessory dwelling units. The problem is, as I said, they're considered legal non-conforming, so if they go away, they can't come back. Now with the code change, it would allow them again by right uh in that. And the other thing is, this one, some of you may recognize, this is unwalled. It's in the rear of the house. Uh, Zach's brother, Zeth Robbins, uh, had put that in there. Uh, we had to rezone it to R two and he had a large enough lot. But basically, you know, that's what we're talking about. And and accessory dwelling units uh serve a good purpose. You'll see a lot of times where family members that can't go into maybe a facility, don't want to and that. You can put one of these in the backyard, they have a place of their own, the, you know, family have. Or you can have it as a rental, you know, somebody that's maybe all they want to live in. Or even a child where, you know, they want to get out on their own, but they really can't afford it. So, you know, you can have, they can live there and, you know, still be at home. So there's a lot of flexibility in that with housing options. But even from a rental standpoint, you know, when these are maybe seven, eight hundred square feet, obviously, the rental of that is going to be much cheaper than, you know, even a two-bedroom, fourteen, fifteen hundred square foot house.
And all of these ADUs also are are fully within city building codes.
Yes, right, yeah, exactly.
It's not as if there's a vision to just do whatever you want.
Right, yeah, that's the thing.
It's still fully within code.
Yeah, that's the same thing. You're not going to be able to bring in what's more or less a, uh, you know, a storage shed and then, you know, start putting sinks and bathrooms in it and saying, this is my ADU. Uh, as I said, with mixed use, um, I put a provision in there, but like everything, it's very hard to try to build a code, uh, kind of meeting every scenario. You either get to where you get so specific it prohibits everything, or, you know, you don't have enough. So what I did is I I kind of have a two-pronged approach, where for larger developments that we may see like this, where it's a large uh development, we'll just go through a planned unit development process. Because they're probably going to go through that anyway. It obviously allows for uh, you know, review by the planning commission, city council and that. However, for smaller scale, like up the street where we have these buildings, they're not in the central business district. They're just zone commercial. So they have legal non-conforming apartments. But what this says now is if you have a um, a building like this and you want to rezone it to mixed use, then you're, then you can keep your uh residential or your commercial down here and put residential up top. But on the smaller lots like that, we can just rezone it and you'll be good to go. Uh, let's see. There we go. Yeah, and as I said before, the mixed use is both for vertical and horizontal. And what I mean by that is horizontal is you could have maybe, let's say, uh, uh, you know, maybe a couple duplexes or a small uh residential here, and then on this side, you have maybe a commercial building in that. And the vertical is, it's contained all in one building. We have vertical mixed use in the downtown where you have commercial on the bottom and you have mixed use or, I mean, residential on the top. But wanted to make sure that um we have both. And we're likely, you know, going to probably see that mostly in and around the downtown, or I envision more a south division becoming our, kind of our true urban corridor, where we're going to see a lot more residential or even mixed use projects, uh, which isn't a bad thing because of the fact that uh we have, again, the infrastructure there in that and uh the land to to do it. Central Business District, uh, there was a few changes uh to it, not a lot, but I did put live work options in there, uh, meaning that currently, like I said, our, our code basically said on the bottom, you got to have all commercial, and then if you want residential on the top. But we have some where business owners may want to have the bottom and have their uh, their business up front, but maybe live in the back, you know, they don't want all the area up top. So basically, the live work would allow that, where you still have the front part of that bottom unit for commercial, but the back part you could actually live in. And in some of the definitions, I didn't go over it, but I've included in there and in the land use table, artisan manufacturing. So it basically will allow for, you know, the bootmakers or the leather makers and all that to, you know, have that type of use. And again, if they want to live in the back and then have that in the front. So it just gives another option for uh kind of small business and uh commercial without, you know, requiring them to have a whole full building that they probably can't afford. And then I just put some provisions for sidewalk cafe seating area. It's really just to say, you can have it, but just make sure it isn't impeding, you know, pedestrian uh progress. Don't put it in the middle of the sidewalk. We haven't had any issues with it, but it's just good to have that in there. At some point, I would like to develop um kind of the code to allow more of the parklets and streeteries like you see there, where we can use some of the actual parking spaces out in the street for outdoor dining. Oh, there we go. Uh, one of the other things that's always been a good thing, and and a lot of planners always think it's a bad thing, but we've allowed uh single-family and commercial zones, which is not very typical, because most modern codes are very segregated with their uses. But our code says you can uh build a single family in a commercial. The only thing is you have to meet all of the residential requirements, setbacks, uses that. There's no mixed use option. So it's either going to be all commercial or all residential. So I put some provisions in there, basically to allow some ability to use as commercial, especially for the commercial zone properties. And one good example is right down the street here on, I think, Second Street, First, Second Street. We have a lot of those homes that go down, almost down to, you know, Goodwill. A lot of those are zoned commercial. And so the code would say, if you want to turn that over to like a flower shop or um, you know, maybe a little bakery or something like that, you can do it. But you got to keep the character, so you got to keep it looking like a single-family residence. You can't, you know, tear it down and then build some other commercial building. But it would allow some of those commercial uses to, again, flow even from the downtown in and around the downtown. Uh, and as I said, the uses would be limited to neighborhood commercial uses. So again, you're not going to be able to use the house and have it a repair shop or, you know, have a body shop or or things like that. It's going to be more, again, like a flower shop, bakery, barber shop, those type, a boutique, those type of things. And then I'll get to it when we go, but parking will no longer be mandated. It will be at the option of uh of the developer. Uh, but if they do provide parking, it'll be in the rear yard. That's one of the issues we've had with some of those turn, being able to turn over to commercial, is by code, they have to provide the necessary off-site parking. Well, they can't do it. It's not physically uh uh there. So now, because it's such a smaller use and in that, even if people need to park on the street for a little bit, it's not a big deal. Uh, in the industrial, there were no major changes, uh, but I did, as I said before, a lot of the industrial had like this four or five-page laundry list of like every possible industrial use you could possibly have. So what I did is I basically put it into four categories uh in that, which will help immensely. Artisan, assembly, light and heavy. Uh, and as I said, artisan manufacturing, again, is like the bootmaker or, you know, a guy that does leather or that uh type of thing. You know, pottery, uh, something like that. Assembly is pretty much what it says. You're still doing like a manufacturing thing, but it's really more just assembly, you know, kind of assembly line. You're not actually creating any type of of new uh product or using raw material, but you are, you know, if you want to say, manufacturing something. But uh, the big difference for that is a lot of that can go in the commercial rather than having it always in the industrial. And then light and heavy is pretty much what it said. Light manufacturing is going to be more of your warehousing, you know, uh, uh, some of your um, any industry that's pretty much in a building and that. And heavy is what it says, where that's where you get to your, you know, batch plants and, you know, your smoke stack almost type stuff, which we really don't have any heavy manufacturing in the community. Most everything is under light, but obviously, there's a category if uh we ever get to that point. Uh, another thing that I put in there that I am a big fan of, and honestly, we'll probably, well, in fact, we would be the first city in the state of Oklahoma to have provisions in their code for this. Uh, it's talked about a lot, but nobody else has implemented. It's what is called is uh accessory uh commercial units. And it's pretty much the same thing as accessory dwelling units, except you can do commercial. And so through a special use permit, in some residential areas, you could uh get approval for an accessory commercial unit. So the example that I use, which is probably more likely to happen, is if somebody is currently baking out of their house, because the cottage laws and that allow you to do that out of your home, but they don't want to do that anymore. But they don't have the ability to maybe go downtown and and get a full, you know, uh, brick and mortar and that. They could build basically a a small unit in their backyard and use it for their commercial purposes in that. And again, the uses would be limited to neighborhood services. Uh, you could have somebody even the same thing that maybe does art or something and have it in the backyard. Or they could even have a little uh convenience type thing where they can sell food or or that. It's, it's one way to, again, kind of have that incubator, business incubator, where you can have them take smaller steps to hopefully make it to a large uh place. One of the examples I give is this is actually a Wollidge in Warner. It's right up from uh Mr. Lenz. It would basically be something like this, where you'd have the house and then you'd have a little thing in the back there, you know, and they maybe have, again, maybe a little flower shop out of it or maybe a little bakery. So somebody could come, pull in, buy their cookies and be on their way. But it's not going to be to the extent where it's going to be like a typical retail uh in the downtown type of thing. Uh, this is another example, uh, and it's probably, could have been a better picture, but another example I give is over by the junior high. We have a lot of those single-family residences and there's even uh the retaining wall there. It basically would allow somebody to put it out in front of their yard, even on a residential property, uh, where they, if they wanted to put a little cafe or, you know, a little um, a little commercial unit. So it not only helps on the business side, but it also starts to provide some of those services to the neighborhood. So again, you get back to how traditional neighborhoods used to be, where you could walk a block and go buy, you know, a pound of meat, or you could go and, you know, get some flowers or some, you know, the bakery, get a loaf of bread and that. So it starts to get back to that, but there's controls on it to make sure that not every property can do it. It's going to be more for properties that are like this one, where you're on some of the main thoroughfares. You have to have the alley uh in that, and so there's some provisions in there. But it at least allows for that step forward to try to uh get some light commercial uh in the areas. The other thing that I put in there, i- and I call, I call it kind of like a micro-mixed use, is again, we have a lot of these large properties, especially south of town, that are built commercially, uh, or I mean, are zoned commercially and they built a single-family residence on it. It would allow them to put a smaller unit like this if they, again, wanted to have a barber shop or something like that, rather than, you know, saying, well, the residential has to go away uh before you can do the commercial. Uh, the special use permit, I updated the factors. If you ever look at our special use permit, it basically is centered around parking and trash. It really doesn't say, you know, you should be looking at the comprehensive plan, you should be looking at, you know, basically the built environment and character of the neighborhood and aspects like that. So I basically updated it to where it's really more reflective of what we should be looking at when we have a special use permit, rather than saying, do they have parking? I added provisions to allow community gardens. Uh, it's pretty straightforward, but it would allow, you know, anybody in a neighborhood, take a vacant lot and have community garden. But there was some provisions in there. You can't have lights and, you know, you'd have to have it fenced, and there's some things to make sure it doesn't get out of control. Uh, res- the residential architectural design standards, uh, I changed, I I basically enhanced those and and I won't, I'll go through this hopefully quickly. But it basically was showing more of what we're expecting with development, you know, here's what we're looking at. Uh, you're going to have the here and you're going to have parking in the back. So again, clearly in the code is, it's going to say, it's going to have to have neighborhood character and you're going to put parking in the rear. Here's another one where, you know, oftentimes you may have a, on a side street, you have a unit here and a unit there uh in that. The front porch requirements, we changed a little bit. My architectural aesthetic side likes traditional porches. A lot of development, they like to do slab-on-grade. So I kind of had that battle between, we need to make it look like a porch since it's not elevated. And originally, we had railing, uh, so we came to a, I guess, compromise to where you can still have slab-on-grade, but the support columns got to be basically larger, you know. A lot of them, they want to put it in, it's almost like a toothpick and it looks like a covered back patio. Uh, so if they enhance the columns or even have architectural designs on those, they don't have to have it um with the railing. They just have to have uh the architectural, but if you do have an elevated porch, then you're fine with whatever uh you use. And then I just made sure that the front porches can't be enclosed. Uh, they have to remain open. If you're going to enclose a porch, it'd be basically your rear patio. Uh, and then two family buildings uh should have a front porch or stoop or an element that provides a distinctive entryway for each unit. Again, I just made that clear. It was already pretty much there. Uh, again, Denton has done a good job of showing you what that means with the Wes Logan duplexes. Uh, I put provisions for a bungalow court. Again, that's basically what I was saying before, where you could have maybe six units on a single property, kind of like this. Uh, multi-building, the same thing. It would just show that you can have, I want to go. There we go. Because the, and this is what I was saying before, the likelihood of having, you know, maybe an eight unit in one building probably isn't going to happen because you get into the commercial code and so you got to spread clutter in that. I envision people doing more of either doing single-family or even doing duplex, where you have four duplexes versus one big building. So anyway, just put some provisions in there so we have that uh control. And then, you know, and then still the single building uh in that. So that was um, and I already went over to garage not required. Uh, accessory structures, one of the things, like I said, like every code, is you can never capture what may happen or every scenario. So I added a provision in there to where if, in one example I give and it's come up, is our code says that one and a half acres or more, you don't have to meet the size limitation, so you're not capped off at eight hundred and fifty square feet. So that person that has two or four or six acres, they can build, you know, a twelve hundred, fifteen hundred square foot uh building. We have many properties that come in that are like one point three. And all the properties around them are like one point seven, one point six. So this poor property gets stuck with not being able to do what everybody else does. So instead of going through the variance and all that, I just put exceptions in there to where given the size, location, exterior materials or that in an area, we can go through a special use permit and say, yeah, you're good. You can go ahead and build your big metal building with no limitations cause you just happen to be, you know, the kind of the odd one out. Uh and I've had some too where they're in a uh area that doesn't allow metal, but every building around them is metal. And it's hard to say you can have it, but the rest, you know, you can't have it, but the rest of you can. So it just allows again uh some flexibility uh in the code. And as I was saying before, I amended the carports where it'll allow carports in the front or the side as long as they're architecturally compatible within the original town site area. It also allows accessory structures to be in the front of the house on one and a half acre parcels or larger. Uh cause sometimes we have those large parcels where the back is literally all wooded. So the only place they can put it is on the side or towards the front, but they're like a hundred feet off the road. So, you know, it's not like uh in our original platted area where it's gonna stick out like a sore thumb. Parking, uh I eliminated the minimum parking requirements for commercial and residential. Uh one of the big issues that has been a land use issue for many, many decades in many cities is basically the city telling a developer how many, how much parking they have. And and in any place where they strictly enforce that, it can be the difference between something being built and something not being built. So in a lot of cases, what this means is somebody's coming in, let's say like T-Mobile and they wanna put twenty spaces and our code says, nope, you need thirty. You know, it's basically saying that's fine. Twenty is is, you know, fine. You know, it's not like you're coming in and is and I put a uh basically a provision in there that says, you know, if you come in and you have a ten thousand square foot building and you say you need no parking, we're gonna say, no, sorry, that's not gonna work. But again, it on the other side, it doesn't force them to put more parking and costs into what they don't need. The other thing that um I added was dimensions for RV and bicycle parking. We didn't have uh in that. Standards for stacking and drive-throughs. So uh now we'll have standards so we don't have what happens over here at uh Cornwell. Where they have a drive-through window that's basically right the sidewalk. So more than one car gets stuck out in the street and blocks traffic. But the other thing that I put in there was to allow a secondary parking space to be gravelled uh in that. Because our code requires everything to be on hard surface uh in that. So a lot of times when somebody wants to, if they have another car or something, they gotta put concrete on the side. This would allow them to basically have a gravel area, but it would have to be enclosed. So that way we can confine it to say, this is the area you get. You can make your whole yard. But it gives some flexibility to where somebody doesn't have to pay, you know, six thousand dollars worth of concrete when they can maybe do a thousand dollars of gravel or something in that. But in our original town side area, that actually will fit in rather well uh in that. Signs, the biggest change we made with signs is to go with monument sign. Uh if you go along um division and you pay any attention to the signs, it is visual cluttered. It is ugly as ever. And there's nothing worse than pole signs, you know, and just a big sign at the top. This would basically say, you know, you can have your sign, but we're gonna make it look halfway nice. You'll get up to ten feet, so it can be taller than this, but it's basically saying you're gonna have to have signs like this. Because even on division, you don't need signs that are twenty feet near. You're even at thirty-five miles an hour or something like this is more than enough for people to know where businesses are. Now, on the opposite side of that, on the I thirty-five corridor, when you're going eighty miles an hour, a twenty-foot sign isn't gonna do you any good. And so most of the signs like loves that came in, they had to go through variances to get where they are. So right now by code, you can get up to seventy-five feet in height in in that. And obviously, if there's other stuff that comes along, we can go through a uh go through a variance process in that. But at least it'll get to where most of the signs will be able to be done by code rather than again going through a variance process all the time. Uh put a limit on the windows. Uh we have a number of businesses, not a lot, but some that'll cover their entire windows with nothing but um uh advertising in that. So basically it just says you get fifty percent uh in that. So you gotta leave the window open some. In the downtown, you only get up to a third uh in that. And then flags, uh we do have people that like vertical flags. Uh the problem is, well, there's two problems. One, they put them in the right way. And so we've been trying to get them to get it out of the right way. But I did put some in there for down south or that to where you can have an allotment and have them there as long as they're not in the right way in that. Cause currently we didn't have anything to regulate it. So somebody could put out twenty and the other one puts out two. And so it's hard to say you can't and you can. So it just added that. And then on the signage, I just separated an agricultural, residential and commercial so they're in their own areas. But most of that really didn't change is uh what you're allowed. There. Uh go through this real quick. Created standards for outdoor commercial storage. Once again, the big thing was to make sure it was screened. So when we go down division or something like that, you don't see a uh contractor's yard with all their junk. You at least have some screening. So it uh is a little bit more aesthetically pleasing. Uh temporary use permit is pretty much what it says where um like for instance, if somebody wants to come down and on a vacant lot downtown and set up maybe for the month of December to sell Christmas trees, we can accommodate that through a temporary use permit. So it also allows then to us to put provisions. So we can say, yeah, stay out of the sidewalk. You know, you can only have so much signage, that type of thing. But it at least allows for, and one of the other things that came up during COVID was uh it was on East Noble where um I I think it was either the dad or the child was immune compromised. So he had to live in an RV on the outside because he didn't want to be on the inside in that. And I wasn't gonna tell him he couldn't by code. But this would allow, you know, through permits for situations like that as well where they're temporary in nature. But there is some oversight and then we make sure that that use doesn't go beyond what it really should. Uh created provisions for medical marijuana. We aren't regulating it any different than we currently have made a determination. It's just been codified. Dispensaries can go anywhere in a commercial area. Uh if you're doing any of the growth facilities and that, it has to be industrial or agriculture uh in that. And but the one thing that was added that a dispensary cannot be within a thousand feet of a school, childcare or facility attended by persons under the age of eighteen. And so it says including but not limited to parks, school programs, children's museums, camps, athletic leagues, et cetera. So that was added in there. Uh created regulations for short-term rentals and that includes like your bed and breakfast, your Airbnbs, uh that type of thing. Uh right now with Airbnbs, they technically required a special use permit uh in the R1. But it was hard to keep a handle on, but this would basically allow it to be a permitted use as long as you're renting out the whole house. If you want to start putting kind of separate units in there like a bed and breakfast, then there's a limit to where you can do it. And then if you go beyond that, you get a special use permit uh in that. But it also will a lot of require registration process. There's not a fee, but at least we can keep it running. Uh kind of like a business license list. So if there are issues on some properties, we can talk uh contact the local people. Added regulations for home occupations. Uh all we had in there was saying you could have a home occupation. Uh and so I added regulations uh in that. And a lot of them just make sure that you don't have too much traffic and, you know, uh deliveries and kind of the standard stuff. Minor subdivisions is one of the things that I changed to. Currently, our code says if you create three or more parcels, you have to have a full uh subdivision, you know, all the re- all the improvements and all that. For small lot subdivisions, that's fine, but for large lots, it causes a problem. Because if somebody has, you know, a twenty acre parcel and they wanna split it into four or five parcels, they're only creating four or five acre parcels, but by code, you're gonna have to go through a full subdivision process. Put in road improvements, you know, all that. So this basically will allow you um some more flexibility. So if you have more than twenty, uh more uh larger than twenty acre parcel, you can create up to six. And then it kind of tears downward uh in that. So it gives a little bit more flexibility uh when we have a large lot, lot splits. And some of this will be taken care of when we redo our subdivision ordinance eventually, but this was at least a good interim. So we get out of that issue. Uh non-conforming buildings and that, not a lot changed, but I clarified the language to how we do it. It's it's the fifty percent rule, which is if like for instance, if your house burns and it's more than fifty percent or it can't be rebuilt in that, then you have, you know, everything has to come in compliance with the current codes. Uh in uh in but even currently, if you again uh wanna put an addition on your home, let's say your house is legal non-conforming for setbacks, but you wanna put an addition on it and the addition will meet the setbacks, you can still do that. But you get to a point where it's like, okay, now you need to bring everything into conformance. But it gives a little bit more flexibility. So we don't have situations where somebody just wants to put a small addition and we say no, cause the whole thing is legal non-conforming. Uh building uses, I the only thing I changed is I went from twelve months to six months if it's been abandoned or we haven't had any uses. So then it gives us a uh, I guess quicker ability to take those legal non-conforming uses uh out of there. Uh that's really what it does. And the same with the land uses. It's the same as the building. Uh reviewing uh decision-making entities, uh it got moved, our planning commission, your guys' stuff actually exists in the municipal ordinance and we're moving it to the um the zoning code. And the same with the board of adjustment. Uh the a lot of this stuff we're moving from the municipal code cause like the signs, it currently is in the municipal code. So technically the board of adjustment doesn't have authority on that. It would take a variance change to do something because it's not in the zoning code. So it clears up a lot of that to where now the signs and all that stuff that typically have variances for uh can function. Uh put in some appeals to administrative decisions. Again, really not anything different than what we do. It's just in writing. Uh variances, uh the probably the thing that I biggest thing I added. I rewrote the purpose and scope to make it more, but the biggest thing is to have minor variances. So in an instance where somebody may have a setback issue and it's maybe a foot, uh we can go through a minor variance process and get it approved in that. So there's no issue, uh especially down the road. Cause more and more nowadays lenders are getting more and more picky about that type of stuff. But we don't have to send them through a full board of adjustment process. We can just do it administratively uh in that. And through that, if you've read, there's, you know, uh obviously limitations. But ultimately, even if I deny a minor variance, they can appeal it to the board of adjustment. Uh administration, basically some updates. So finally, I know you guys have been waiting for this. Next steps. And thank you for bearing with me. A lot of it I, you know, wanted to get on public record, so I appreciate that. But uh the next step is April first, uh we'll be taking it to the city council for an introduction and kind of questions. April fifteenth, I'm not sure yet because with eighty-niners, we may have a special meeting uh in that. I'm not really sure yet. But we'll have a second meeting uh sometime in April to have the actual adoption. And then uh hopefully publication at the end of uh April, and as I said, an effective date of the zoning code at the end of May. And then we'll be on a uh much better path for our community. So thank you again. Uh so if you have any questions?
Any discussion?
Get y'all.
I will say that, I will say that a lo- a lot of this is a win if this does ultimately go through. It is, it is a win for citizens of Guthrie to to be able to do more things by right.
Yeah.
Versus special permit. I also think that it will also streamline what we do by basically some of the things that are always approved will now become a right. And so it will kind of clear up the the need uh for some of the things that we hear also. So with that, do we have a motion to send this on?
I would make a motion that we accept the zoning changes.
Second. All right, motion by Nichols, second by Lentz, Stephen Harrison?
Yes.
Lloyd Lentz?
Yes.
Phil Nichols?
Yes.
And Zach Robinson?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other staff comments?
No, no.
From Dan?
I think I've taken my time.
Any comments from any of you all?
Well, yeah, I'd say that I appreciate when people show up and and have good conversations. And I appreciate our new developers, our people that are investing in our community and and uh I really do appreciate you and your staff's work. This is
Thank you.
That was a big project and uh you guys did an outstanding job.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think you did fantastic, Dan. And like I was saying earlier, I was impressed at the ti- amount of times walkability was in there when I was skimming it over. I think that's moving it in the right direction.
I agree.
Absolutely. Well, with that, do we have a motion to put this meeting to an end?
I would love to make a motion.
Six, Stephen gave a second.
All in favor.
Aye.
There we go. We are adjourned.
Thank you.